We're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Before we do, we're gonna have a prayer and place the list of the players. Councilor Hallow, do this prayer.
Yes.
You can bow with me.
May your wisdom be upon us and may we walk in spirit of fairness so that our affairs will reach a successful conclusion tonight. Give us the insight necessary to make decisions that are for the good of all our citizens who have placed their trust and confidence in this council. We thank you for being our source of guidance tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Taylor?
Here.
Wayne Best?
Here.
Buddy Holly?
Here.
Kenyon Me?
Here.
Ken Minnet?
Here.
Lonnie Murray?
Here.
Clark?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes of June 6th, 2015 meeting?
Motion.
Second. Motion second.
That's it.
Mr. Speaker?
That's it.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Murray?
Mr. Speaker, he's going to approve the bills. Get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Minnet, second. Councilman Hallow, Councilman Minnet, get in.
Yes.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Murray?
Yes. Mr. Speaker. At this time, we'll hear the delegation if you have anything to bring for the council. You just stand and state your name and keep it put in three minutes.
That's Mayor Best, members of the city council. First of all, my name is Bob Lee. I live over there on Front Street here in Harriman. First of all, I would like to commend the city police department for responding to incidents over the weekend. They reacted quickly and professionally, took care of the issues at hand. A lot of us still like to say that Chief Hallow has a good crew of officers who do their job very well. Second of all, this is late and forthcoming, speaking on behalf of the Tribeca Room Stride Club, I would also like to commend these officers for patrolling while we had our road blocked to make sure that while we were taking donations, the traffic safety was handled very well. And also to firefighters who helped us collect donations. The city's been very supportive of us. We currently have a little over $25,000 to donate to donate to our hospitals, Ron and Morgan Counties, and we hope to collect another $10,000 before the middle of July. Thank you all very much.
Very much.
My name's Mary Holly. I'm the spouse of Mr. Buddy Holly. He has, Chris, he has done something that I've been told for years now could not be done. The old paper mill site. Well, when he got elected, he decided he'd try. I think it's probably been five years now. Even Charles said we can't do anything with that place, right?
That's true.
And he's done that. And now we're getting it to the city and he's got plans for the future of that place. But in all your rights, you voted not to have one building that he thought should be down there, that we should keep. It would save money in the long run, because that goes in with his plans. But you all have no plans, but yet you voted not to keep anything down there. I just think you need to rethink all of that, guys. I think you're wrong. He's the one that has spent all these years down there, going back and forth and back and forth. And why didn't you listen to him? I'd just like to know why you didn't, why you didn't move the building. So, I guess it's all, did I have anything else I was gonna tell? No, right now. Lonnie and I are gonna have to have a talk later. It's okay.
Thank you.
And I think you can bring it up again and keep that building.
Okay.
We've got a workshop next week. We can bring it up there if we're gonna discuss it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No? Old Business? Councilman Hallow?
I did have one thing on that paper slide that I was gonna say. I've said we voted not to destroy all the buildings, but we didn't really have a plan for the site, at least in detail. And I would, we'd need to please look at it. The one, the one building I was really interested in keeping, I said, change it, because it has bathrooms and showers and stuff. This is kinda outstanding, but I'll, off the record, but I will propose that if we would keep that one building and the city does not use it, I'll pay for the demolition. I'll be happy to get the city attorney to draw the contract and the place we're gonna figure if we decide on it.
When is, when are they looking at demolition?
They're starting, I had the notes, they finished their testing and they're waiting on the results. Results will take about a week and then they're gonna start demolition next week, so about two weeks. When they start. Now, they'll probably start back, back at the water and work their way towards the highway, because that's the toughest buildings. That'll, a turbine building back there, the walls and floors are three or four feet, thick concrete, they're gonna take some work to it.
And I think that was one of the things when we discussed it, was we didn't know exactly what we was gonna do with it. We didn't really have a plan. We was trying to figure out financials as to how to do it, what to do. I don't have a problem with, I don't have a rest of you all feel with Mr. Holly, with the city manager and getting some kind of plan as to what we're looking at. We're probably, we're two weeks out from our next meeting. We could put it on there to discuss the next meeting.
I had a plan that was about destroying a disk. The Rome State guy set it on a disk, the computer on South and destroyed the whole plan. We're pretty even on the plan.
Okay, I appreciate you going out on a limb saying, you know, you'd tear it down if we decided we couldn't use it.
I think it's important to the city to, you know, have a place for people to build a bathroom at least, and, you know, maybe even take a shower if you're down there running or jogging or doing something. And it could also serve as a senior assistance unit, because it's plenty of room in there for a place for people to be. But I thought was to do it like David Webb did, you know, I'd go out and solicit the businesses, you know, for materials and stuff and get volunteers and try to do, you know, at no cost or almost no cost to the city. Refer, H U V will put security lights up for us to cover that and a couple cameras, I think we can protect it through that.
And you did say they tested it and asbestos is gone?
Yeah, no asbestos. But the only one that had some asbestos flooring in it was the administration building, which is gonna come down. I want to look at it again, it does have asbestos floor on through.
And they're gonna clean all that growth?
Yeah. What I was afraid of is if they tear the, all buildings down, they'll tear those parking lots up, you know, and I think Santeras parking lot's up. I think they can get some round up from the drag and go clean those up. But there's two really big blacktop parking lots there in Breathe Head, etc. We'd go on up through the grass and stuff.
Well, I think for historical, that's part of the history of the city of Harriman. For no other reason than historical value, it probably should be saved.
We've got a workshop next week.
I was, I was.
Could you put on the, I know we're gonna be discussing budget and stuff next week. Put on the workshop. Anything else, Mr. Hallow? Thank you. Councilman Minnet?
That's it.
Councilman Hallow?
That's it.
Councilman Minnet?
Councilman.
Councilman Wright?
Once again, raise a concern with Comcast. I keep getting comments from the general public concerning the problems. And of course, if you're a patron of Comcast, you understand what they're saying. A lot of it's just poor service and you can't find anybody to take your concern to locally or even regionally. I'd like, I'd like for the franchise agreement to be pulled, because I think it's been some five, six years or longer since we made that agreement. I'd like for it to be pulled and let's go over it and perhaps it's time that we have another sit down with those people and they address some of these problems that existed from the last time we met with them.
Could you file that agreement and email it out to each one of us and let us look over it and address this at the next meeting? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I don't have anything. Department reports?
I left a copy of our financial report for last year on the desk here, as well as your monthly financials.
Thank you. Who's department? Lobby?
Lobby's party went good.
It was really good. We're on this one.
And the children's problems, I'm ready to vote starts next week.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Just wanna remind everyone that T D has issued a permit to Norfolk Southern to close Pinehurst Road. That closing will occur around 9:00 AM tomorrow morning and it would be anticipated to last until about 3:00 AM the following morning. There will be traffic control in place to direct people away from that particular area. Also, we did successfully submit the tiger grant. Dr. Curley spent four or five hours on the phone on the last day with the federal government trying to work out some issues with the account to be used to submit that and we did beat the deadline, so that grant has been submitted.
Thank you.
Has there, has there been any other updating since the death of the gentleman that owned these buildings? We've got so much trouble with, as, oh, who's gonna be in? I'll just, I'll refer to them.
Anybody have any questions? City manager? If not, committee reports? Any committee reports?
Farmers Market began last Saturday along with the Oak Side Festival. There was a huge crowd down there, most of us from Oak Side Festival. The Farmers Market got started, we had almost all of our vendors back plus one additional one. We opened Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00, and next Saturday from 8:00 to 9:00.
Thank you. On the Farmers Market? Where are we at on the Pavilion Park?
We received a one-year extension on the grant funding, so that will be June 30th of 2016. We had, I think, agreed to pause with regard to moving forward with the Pavilion until we saw what happened with the sites here on Rome Street, determining whether or not either one of those might be a better location compared to the site behind the building here that we were looking at. I think realistically, we have until probably September to make that decision, place an order for the Pavilion, to both have it in place before the next Farmers Market season as well as to meet the deadline to receive our funding back from the state.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murray. We're going to the agenda. Update from the county representative on the buildings, 500 block of North Rome Street. We got Ms. Farm here, representing the county and the county attorney. Mr. Lefew, if y'all wanna address council?
Well, on my end, as you know, Mr. Jim K. passed away. The problem that the county has is Jim K. has property inside the building that the county does not own. And as a governmental entity, the county is subject to the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, which prohibits the illegal seizure of property, so we need a court order before we go in and raid that property. I had a hearing set for Monday morning to get that court order, and then I found out a few days before that that Mr. Jim K. had passed away. I have a hearing set for next Wednesday to appoint what is called an administrator ad litem for Mr. Jim K. That is an administrator for the purposes of our lawsuit to represent the interest of his estate and his heirs. Once I get that administrator ad litem appointed, then I can go forward with my request to get the order to let us in the building and remove the property. That should be scheduled for July 2. So, we're hoping to have, what we're really hoping for is that the Jim K. family gets an estate open and they'll just agree to abandon the property, because that was the agreement that I had made with Mr. Jim K.'s lawyer, is just if he died and then we could, his lawyer called and said that his client was dying, was dead, so he couldn't sign the court order. We were going to do an agreed order and then his client died, so we didn't have any authority to sign it back. So, best case scenario is we get an agreement with the family and we can just dispose of the property. Worst case scenario is on July 2, we get a court order that gives us possession of the property and then we have, the county has to arrange to move all that stuff out.
What timeframe you think that'll happen?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, I mean, how long will it be till, till a decision is made, do you think?
We have a court hearing on July 2. The court will make a decision on July 2.
How quick after that do we see some results?
That's out of my hands. I can't answer that. I'm just telling you that the earliest I can get a court order is July 2.
Do you all do this with every piece of property you take? Do you go through this, all these steps of? You know, I think our issue is the safety of that building and it's sitting on Long Street and what it's doing to our town, what it's doing for the safety of our citizens. And I understand, what you, you know, your job is for the county, but I was wondering, is that the same thing you do with every position y'all take? Do you have to get a court order to go in and move their stuff?
Well, the law requires that a government entity cannot seize a person's property and take control over that property without a court order.
And that's what the county does every time?
This is the first time the county's ever had to resort to that, based on my knowledge.
And the reason for that is because of the death of Mr. Kim K.?
The reason is because of the death of Mr. Jim K. And one thing that I really need to stress is that under the delinquent tax statutes, the county has no authority to go in and take possession of property until after the redemption period expires. In this case, the redemption period expired on April 23 in this year, so the county could not have done anything to court April 23. The first available court date after April 23 to get this rid of possession was Monday, July 8. But under the tax, the property tax, delinquent tax statutes, if the taxpayer does not move out voluntarily when the redemption period is over with, then the county has to go to court and get a rid of possession. Now, to my knowledge, the county's never had to do that before, but this is a first time for all of us.
If you get that with the family, you know, another concern with me is if you get that with the family, being the county owns the property and they know the liability of letting somebody go in, you gonna let them go in and get, you gonna let them go and get their stuff with that liability?
Like I'm saying, that's out of my hands. I don't have that.
Who makes that decision?
I don't, I don't know who makes that decision. The motion that I have filed is just to get a rid of possession so we can go in and start doing something to get the building cleared out. Now, I've requested in my motion that the court just let the county dispose of the property, but I don't know that the court will grant that. But under the law, the procedure is you get a rid of possession if the family doesn't move the property out and the court doesn't allow us to just dispose of it, then the county's gonna have to move the property out. As far as the condition of the building and the process for moving it out and what has to be done to shore the buildings up, I don't know. The mechanism under the law is to get a rid of possession, which is a court order to move the property out.
It is our position, though, if all goes well and we can dispose of the property, is that it's gonna go down with the building. We're not gonna try to salvage anything.
And like I say, I need a court order that says that, and I have asked for that in the pleadings that I have filed. Now, whether the court grants me that, I don't know. But at most, I will get a rid of possession that allows it to be moved out.
And the bids do open Thursday. And with the bonding requirements that we have set in the bid, really and truly the time of July 2 will work pretty well with what has to happen in order to get, you know, boots on the ground and tear it down.
With the, your legal position with the county and how we're doing this and it's past the April 23 date, so I'm assuming we're gonna see the county do this on all their other properties that they have material in it, whether it's junk or good material? So, you all own, now own as of April 23, some other buildings on Rome Street. Are all these included in the writ you're trying to get?
The only ones that are included are the two buildings that the county wants to demolish.
So, if the county decides, six months later, they wanna demolish the others, they're gonna have to go back and get another writ?
I don't know what other buildings the county is considering demolishing. The only ones I'm aware of are those two.
The two, he's talking about the two that we have moved? Um, so, Mr. Speaker?
There's still, there's still litigation pending on the two across the street, because the county is seeking to rescind the bids that the county was forced to make. And if that is granted, then title will go back to the Jim K. family.
Okay, I think it's just kinda odd that we're doing it for the first time, like you said, the first time you've heard of the county doing it. And First Christian Church sold them on Morgan Street and the county took it over for back taxes. I didn't see anything about them going to try to find out the last owner and make sure they got church pews or anything like that back, because I know there was material in there. So, it just seems odd that we jump out to do it on buildings that are definitely condemnable. But that one was condemnable on Morgan Street also. The county, they've either sold it to somebody for remodeling or they've just stalled on that one also. So, every time we, every time the county owns a piece of property from here going forward that the city's dealing with, we need to make sure we go ahead and let you know to get writs for this possession, even though you've taken possession of it previously? So, if it comes to a condemnable sale, it'll get tore down?
The only properties that I'm aware of are the two that we're trying to demolish. Those particular properties, I don't know if the taxpayer gave the county possession of it or not. But these two properties I'm familiar with, these two properties are the only properties that I can answer questions about. And on these two properties, the taxpayer, Mr. Jim K., did not relinquish possession after the redemption period expired. So, our only recourse under the law is to go before the chancellor and get a rid of possession, which is what we are doing.
So, I guess what I'm getting at, who do we need to go through? Do we need to go through Ron's office or through our commissioner to have all the other properties that the county has in Harriman that are either condemnable through our building inspector or whatever, wanting you to move it or want, we're wanting to buy it from you? We need to go ahead and get all of you now so you can find out, even though you all already own them? Some of them had possession of three and four, five years or more maybe? I mean, do you still go back to the property owners? Are you saying you're gonna have to?
Um, Kenyon, the difference in the building, the church building you're talking about and these properties is that the church building had already gone through the clerk and master's office to try to sell. It had already gone through Ron's office to try to sell. And by that point, it had gone so many years that it was declared surplus county property and it actually came to my office to sell on GovDeals. So, it was a totally different position. This, this property was just conveyed to us and there hasn't been, you know, it, it didn't go through all the processes that the other county properties.
Right, but you understand what I'm saying. It just seems like it's a time thing and since there hasn't been a month and a half or whatever, that this one is kind of, we take a new approach to it where one that's a year old and we're like, okay, it can go through the steps you were setting.
Well, the problem with this one is, though, if it had not burned, it would have gone from clerk and master's office down to Ron Whitney's office and it could have stayed down there for the time period that his office is required by law to try to sell it again. I mean, it's such a convoluted process, but once that, you know, it has to stay down there with him to sell that. And then years later, it comes to me to sell a surplus property. So, had it not burned, this would never have been an issue for us, I don't think, because it would have been sold.
Any more questions?
As I understand what you're saying is Mr. Jim K. passed away, therefore that threw this into a different ballpark, so to speak, from what your ordinary tax sale would involve.
Well, Mr. Jim K. passed away before we could get our court orders, so we have to appoint somebody to represent the interest of his estate before we can get our court orders.
Any other questions? We want to thank you for your time coming over and explaining it and, you know, we're just, we've seen it since, you know, December, January, we just want it cleaned up. The safety is just, you know, even with it roped off, a car goes by, if that building falls, and we've all got reports saying that it could fall at any time, it falls on a car and, you know, something bad happens, you know, we just all feel like that we want to push it as quickly as possible. And we said to y'all, we appreciate it.
With our name on that, they, we want that too. So, it's not like we're dragging our feet.
Well, I'm not too much concerned about it falling on a car, because I can think the collapse zone is only about 25 or 30 feet from the base of the building. What I would be concerned about was somebody walking along the street there and having What I would be concerned about was somebody walking along the street there and having that fall. We dodged a bullet several years ago with the Asheville when it happened. It happened to be no cars on that highway. Had it been, we would have people buried in that. But that's, that's the problem is we need to, if we're not going to close, close the whole thing, the whole sidewalk and everything off in that area, we need, we need to do something quicker. And the quicker we do it, the better.
Thank you. Thank you. Number nine, discussing possibly approve replacing Gene Wilson with Julia Garland in the library. Motion to accept. Julia Garland? That motion, counsel Mee, second, counsel another. Counsel Mee? Call her up, please.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly? Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ray?
Yes.
Discuss and possibly take action on a TBA agreement. Everyone should have the agreement in your packet. Kevin, you want to elaborate on this just a little?
This actually came before the board a few months back at a work session. And following that discussion, I failed to have Angie put this on the agenda, so it's coming before you this evening. Essentially, it's carrying forward, renewing an agreement that's currently in place between the city of Harriman and Fire Department to provide services to the TBA facility. Everything remaining unchanged with the exception of the rates that they pay to the city in the event that we have to respond to some sort of event out there. And those rates are being updated to reflect the most current FEMA rates.
Move for approval. No motion? Say? Counsel Rye?
No.
Counsel Mott?
No, sir.
Anybody have any discussion? My caller.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ray?
Yes.
Relate to discussing possibly take action on post machine contract with advanced milling systems. Everyone should have that in their packet. Kevin, you want to elaborate on that?
I discussed this in a little more detail this afternoon with Dr. Curly. He has indicated that because of our property tax melons, he would like to pursue the possibility of the city getting a bulk milling permit. As a result, that could change what we might want to do with regard to this machine going forward. So I would request that the council defer this until next month.
Does anybody have a possible just to follow?
I think a motion would do it. We defer it. I think that regarding motion, doesn't?
I'm not sure.
We can go ahead. Most be safe. Counsel Mott?
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ray?
Yes.
Discuss and possibly take action on replacing tennis courts at Drax Track in South Harriman. That is, everyone's worried. We had a public meeting last week. No one came forward. Have you received any feedback since last week?
I have not received any far against it. But my recommendation at this point would be that your, your action would be limited to authorize me to submit all the needed documentation to the state to gain approval to make that conversion. And then assuming that the state does eventually grant that, we would return it to you with cost estimates for the actual work to be done.
Move for approval. Motion to approve what you just said.
That's been on the, on the horizon for a number of years. I think it's time we did something about it.
I agree. And there was a petition that went around and I think there was like 20 something people signed it, but we didn't see it happen. You know, everybody that drove by there has looked at it. It's just, it's been sitting there for 25 years, not done anything. So I hope we get to put it back in use. Anybody have anything else?
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly?
Yes.
Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet?
Yes.
Lonnie Ray?
Yes.
Motion carries. Discuss and possibly take action on East Tennessee Development District Local Planning Contract for 2016. I have a motion to accept the contract. Motion to second. Counsel Mader?
Yes, sir.
Counsel Wright?
Yes.
Anybody have anything?
Did it give them up any?
I think it's. All discussion, call her up.
Chris Taylor?
Yes.
Wayne Best?
Yes.
Buddy Holly? Kenyon Me?
Yes.
Ken Minnet? Lonnie Ray?
Yes.
Any other business that you can report, counsel? Counsel Mott, motion adjourned?
Right.
Second. Motion second, I'll play right.